Good evening and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Workshop held on Thursday, October 1st, 2020. We will begin with a silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Silent prayer. Okay, everyone, the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We do not have anyone that wishes to address the board, so we will move on to item one, Committee of the whole discussion of human resources staffing report. Mr. Mendoza. Mr. Mendoza.
Can everyone see the screen?
We can see it now, yes.
All right, perfect. Good evening Commissioners, Vice President Harvey and Superintendent Dr. Ruffin. Tonight, I'm going to be reviewing our staffing report for the 2020-2021 school year. I've modeled this presentation in the way that it was presented last October to include all the relevant data regarding all of our teachers and administrators hires for the school year. Before I begin, I would like to just share that much of the work that has been done in our offices last few months have been focused on staffing and reopening our schools during COVID. And with that, I really want to give a huge shout out to my HR team, who's personally been working really hard, working overtime, under pressure, to get our schools open and fully staffed during this COVID. Before we begin with our hiring data, I just wanted to highlight a few things that our Human Resources Office and our Talent Management Office has combined. We are now called the Human Capital Talent Office. We no longer function in silos and instead we work closely with one another to focus on recruitment, onboarding, professional development, and retention of all staff. Before we look at our current numbers, I just wanted to share a couple of slides from the presentation that the mayor conducted a few weeks back with the Board of Alderman. This slide shows the progression from year to year since the year 2013 on percentage of minority hires for our district. It's important to highlight that the numbers in this presentation on this slide are the calendar year, not school year. Tonight, for the purpose of this meeting, I will be reporting on our school year. Our next slide is just a quick slide just for you to refer to. This is the percentage of minority administrators that were hired in the district. And again, this is just based on calendar year. And with that, now I'm just going to move forward to our current numbers. This is our current EO hiring data as of July 1st for our school this year. As you can see, we have filled a total of 121 positions. We have hired a total of 113 teachers and eight administrators. When breaking this data down further, you can see the makeup of our teacher hires. We've hired 22 white males and 62 white females, three Asian females, four African-American males, two African-American females, five Hispanic males, 10 Hispanic females, and one male and four females that classify themselves as two or more races. When looking at the percentage of minority teachers hired for the school year, we are currently at 25.66%. This is roughly about one percentage point higher than we were last year around this time. And I've included that data off to the right. In terms of administrators, our total for minority hires is at 50%, which is exactly where we were at this point last year. On this chart, we've broken down the percentage of hires for each ethnicity further by racial category to the left. On the right-hand side is the percentage of teachers by racial category. Overall, our hires have been 72% white, 4% African-American, 14% Hispanic, 2% Asian, and 4% two or more races. With this data, we recognize that there's still a lot of work ahead of us to diversify our staff. However, we recognize that we also are above the state average, which is currently at 9.6% of minority teachers. On this last slide, I'm sharing their resignations and retirements for our current vacancies. We currently have 24 retirees as compared to last year where we only had four. So that was a big spike this year, and we think that's attributed to COVID. Moved out of state, we have two, which is the same as the previous year. Teachers that have left with no reason, we have 52. Last year, we had 50. Retired assignments, we have one that ended, and 15 teachers have left for another district. The data point that is concerning to us here is the 52 teachers that have left for no reason. Because of this, we've reinstated an exit survey. And additionally, we've also added a personal touch where we have our talent team actually reach out directly to the people that have resigned as soon as we received their resignations. We try to get further clarification as to why they are leaving our city and what can we do to improve further. On the right, we have our current vacancies for our city, which is a total of 54. And we have broken it down by level. When we analyze our vacancies, we are pleased that although bilingual education is a shortage area, we have only three current bilingual vacancies in the district. After further review, it is clear that our biggest priority areas, which are very hard to fill, are secondary math, science, special education, and tech education. When we look at special education, we currently have about 14 vacancies. However, it's very important to point out that we hired 24 specialized teachers over the summer. Before I close, I would like to share our current recruitment efforts. Currently, Waterbury Public Schools makes use of social media and recruitment platforms such as Twitter, Facebook, LinkedIn, Indeed, At the Track, EdWeek, and CTREAP to aggressively and strategically attract and recruit talented and diverse candidates from a variety of sources, including recent college graduates and teachers working across the state. We also do announcements and emails sent directly to community organizations here in Waterbury, such as Race, Easter Seal, WOW, the NRZ Learning Center, the Hispanic Coalition, Spanish Council, NAACP, local churches, MBCC, et cetera. Also, we have participated in various virtual career fairs this year because of COVID. We're also outreach into historically black colleges and universities through the Handshake App. We also reach out to teacher organizations, university student teaching programs this year. We reinstated some contracts because that was not in place last year for student teaching candidates. We currently have contracts with Franklin Pierce University, University of Bridgeport, Grand Canyon University, University of Connecticut, and we're currently working with Western Connecticut and University of St. Joseph currently. With the challenges presented by COVID in terms of attending job fairs, our department this year, we purchased over the summer the Brazen Software Platform. And what we do is we host virtual career fairs, and we can hold career fairs throughout the year using this platform. With the recognition that there is also a teacher shortage, I know the district has rolled out the Board of Approved Educators Rising Teacher Preparation Curriculum. Currently, there are 369 high school students enrolled district-wide in that program. And lastly, we're excited to share that Waterbury Public Schools has partnered with Teach Connecticut, which is a new initiative from the Connecticut State Department of Education. Their main goal is to provide pathways to certification for all people that show an interest in teaching. Our partnership has strengthened over time, and we are currently working on recruitment efforts in three areas. We're working at the Waterbury community at large, Waterbury high school students, and Waterbury non-certified staff. In the weeks to come, surveys will be sent out to people in our three focus areas to identify individuals considering teaching, asking what roadblocks they face, the questions they have, and how they'd like to receive support. In this partnership with Waterbury Public Schools, Teach Connecticut will provide one-on-one coaching sessions for interested individuals, create custom educational paths to certification, and host digital webinars for all three focus areas. Waterbury Public Schools will receive actionable data in order to develop a system to grow our own at a broad scale. As a result of this partnership, we hope to see more Waterbury residents, students, and non-certified staff become teachers in our very own classrooms. Our department is very excited about the work that lays ahead. We recognize that there's still a lot of work, and this concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Okay, Juan, thank you very much. Juan, can you take that down just for me so I can see the folks, please? Okay, thank you very much. All right, are there any questions? Wave your hands. Okay, Commissioner Jason Van Stone, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Vice President Juan. Thank you for that report. Just a couple of questions. First off, for the 100 and change, it looks like 21 people we hired, we're happy overall. They're good teachers and administrators.
Yes, overall, 21.
Perfect. One stat I'm always interested in learning. We have the percentage of minority hires. But is there the opportunity to see a percentage of applicants of a minority status that have been hired? Meaning that if we've hired, let's say like 29 or call it 35 minority folks, was that out of 38 total applicants of a minority status? You know, because one of the conundrums we always seem to face with minority hiring is kind of the pipeline. You know, how many minority applicants do we have? Are we hiring everyone that comes, you know, in front of us if they're qualified and it's still a low number? Or are we turning away minority applicants who might be qualified? So without that one data point, it's hard for me to really understand. We're doing a good job. We're doing a better job. We could be doing this. So I don't expect you to know off the top of your head. Is that something you could get us?
That's something that I think I could look into. One thing I will say, there is a lack of minority candidates because I think that's a shortage statewide. To be honest, we have 206 districts, and I think everyone's trying to push for minority hires, but puts us in a complicated place. But I think that's why we try to do these alternate programs to see if we can grow our own.
And that's 100% correct, and that's kind of where I'm going is, you know, maybe five years ago was the first time I remember really initiatives hitting the kind of the minority community, driving them to become teachers. So obviously, it's going to take a long time for that kind of fruit to bear. So hopefully, we're getting closer with each oncoming year. But I always like to realize, you know, if we've hired, like I said, whatever it was, 34 folks, you know, what was that out of a possibility we could have potentially hired? So like I said, if you could get us that number at some point, I think that might even add a little bit more light to us. And I'm going to go out on a slight limb here. I'm going to assume for a lot of those people who left with no reason, it was money.
That is one of the biggest reasons in my short time here that I get to overhear some of the conversations, and I know that is one of the issues.
And I imagine we could probably tell that just by seeing what, if we know what district they went to. It's not hard to put our scale next to that.
Yes, yes.
All right. Thank you, Juan. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question? Hold on. Just kind of wave your hand if you do. All right, okay, Commissioner Brown.
Okay, hi. Thanks again, Juan, for the report. I just had a question. Do we have any candidates in the relay program? I can't remember if we activated that.
Yes, we currently have two candidates in the program.
Okay, and of the substitute teachers I see that are, you know, in the pipeline to get their certification, do we know how many are minority teachers?
No, but I could get that information for you.
Because I think that's a good pool to draw from, obviously. And the other question I had was, I know the state, I thought initiated something where they were really pushing for military personnel to become teachers. They were, they had money for them to go to school and so forth. Has that been, have you seen any movements there where we're hiring former veterans who became teachers?
In my short time in this position, I really haven't seen that at all, to be honest with you.
It just might be something to think about because the state is paying their tuition to become teachers. So, and I know we have a lot of military personnel who retire in the greater Waterbury area. The other thing, I'm really excited about the career pathways for, especially I find that a lot of our peer professionals have associate's degrees and are close to getting their degrees. So I'm really happy about that. So overall, I think we're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Any questions?
I did want to add something. One last thing, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I believe we did hire one vet. Now I'm looking at some of my data here. And also, Teach Connecticut, I think that touches upon a little bit on the vet side of what you said.
All right, Commissioner Stengel.
Thank you. Juan, thanks again for that. I know this is one of your, one of your first chances to come up and present, and you did an excellent job. Appreciate it. My question would be, when HR or wherever gets all the applications to people who want to apply in Waterbury to be a teacher, how do we know by looking at the application if that person is a minority or not a minority? Is there a place on the application for a box to check on that?
We could look at it on the software when we look at, but technically, usually we don't. We just kind of take the applicants, and once we have them. But there is on frontline where they could check off, but a lot of times, they don't check that off, to be honest with you.
So, so we don't know then. I mean, when people, if you hire, if you tell someone to come in for an interview, you don't know what you're getting other than what the resume says.
But we could look at, and when we do see minority candidates, we make sure to include them in the pool as well when they indicate it. But a lot of times, you don't have to indicate what race you are.
No, I realize that. Yes, yes. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I don't see anyone. Oh, okay, Commissioner Hernandez. Unmute yourself. There you go.
Unmute. Okay, all right. Juan, just a question. How well are we publicizing the different types of programs that are out there for those that are working for us now that may not really know what's going on and how to go about getting involved in trying to get their certifications and everything else? I mean, are we doing newsletters every week or just how are we really getting it out there?
A lot of it is through our social media and emails. But I also know we work closely with our counterpart here for the city, HR, who oversees the paras. And I know during the presentations, when they hire them, that's part of the, one of the topics they cover, things that you could do in terms of certification. We currently have, since special ed is a shortage area, we currently at this point, we've hired three paras based on the qualifications, how many credits they have that are serving as specialized teachers.
Okay.
And they're working on the certification at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Vice President Harvey.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right, I don't see anyone else waving. So, Juan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the presentation. I understand, Juan. I just learned today that I had to run the meeting, but I had a whole list of questions. So just get ready because I think there was, there's a period of time between 2017 where we made some really big improvements, put a lot of changes in as far as processes, et cetera. And I didn't see that mentioned in the mayor's presentation. So I will deal with that in another meeting. But thank you so much for this presentation. And how often are we, do you think we'll be able to get this type of report? Previously, we got it like maybe once, once a month or once every three months?
Well, whatever the, whenever the superintendent would ask me to present, I could present on that data or I could share that.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you very much, Juan. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, so we'll move on to item number two, Committee of the whole discussion of the 2019-2020 AP exam results. Mr. Schwartz and Ms. Patterson. That's a data Sony, excuse me.
Hi, good evening, Vice President Harvey, Commissioner Superintendent Ruffin. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm pleased to report to you our AP results, our Advanced Placement Program results for the 1920 school year. As many of you know on the board, that the AP enables students to pursue college-level studies while still in high school. The exams are scored on a scale of one to five by college and university professors, experienced AP and inexperienced AP teachers. And many of our US colleges offer the credit for students who score three or higher. The test dates this year, this past year, were May 11th to May 22nd. And so some of you might be wondering, how did that occur during the midst of the shutdown? The exams were altered this year. They were open book notebook. However, the format and questions were designed specifically for an at-home administration. So points were not, that could be found for online. Each of the subjects exam was taken on the same day at the same time worldwide. For example, AP Bio would be on the same day worldwide for all students taking the AP Bio exam. On test day, students were required to verify their own identity and confirm the work they submitted was their own. There were tools in the software to detect any plagiarism to protect the accuracy of the test. And one of the interesting changes this year was that they went to only open-ended questions and went away from multiple choice. So in some level, although the test was at home, open-ended, as we all have taken assessments before, is a little bit harder than sometimes the multiple choice questions. And so it's interesting that when I get to the results page. At this time, we do not have national or state data to compare to yet. That has not been released. So the board, I did slim it down for you to data pages, but I want to just do a quick interpretation of those data pages for you and the public watching. And I know that sometimes we put percentages out there. And I like to talk sometimes real numbers, real student bodies, and sometimes that makes a little bit more sense. And so I want to highlight some of the positives from 1819 to the 1920 school year. For students that scored three or higher, which is passing, and as I said before, many colleges will accept credit for students who pass the exam. So in biology, we went from five students passing to 12. In calculus AB, we went from seven students passing to 23. In English Language and Composition, we went from 35 students passing to 50. In English Literature and Composition, we went from 13 students passing to 39. And in Psychology, we went from 13 students passing to 35 students passing. In US Government and Politics, we went from 10 students passing to 26. And United States History, we went from 31 students passing to 50. Overall, we went from 202 students passing in 1819 to 202 assessments passed in 1819 or assessments passed in 1920. 54 of those were scored at a level five, highest you could score on the assessment. I also provided the board. Run that, break that down for you a little bit more. That last year, Waterbury had 53 AP Scholar Awards for students. That's up from 36 the previous year. An AP Scholar fires on three or more AP exams. We had 30 AP Scholars in 1819, and last year, we had 31. An AP Scholar with honors averages a score of 3.25 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more exams. We went from four AP Scholars with honor to 11 last year. An AP Scholar with distinction scored an average of 3.5 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more exams. And we went, I'm proud to say that we went from two AP Scholars of distinction to eight in the district. And students qualify for National AP Scholar Awards by earning an average score of a four or higher on a five-point scale of all AP exams taken and scores a four or higher on eight or more exams. And yeah, that's eight exams. I had to read that twice to remind myself. And so we went from no students getting the National AP Scholar last year to two students getting that, and they were both in Kennedy. And so I have those numbers broken down for you on the backup that I provided, breakdown by school. More or less, we were moving in the right direction when it comes to AP exams. I know sometimes there's a battle between taking an AP class or a UConn or an NVCC class because those offer credit right away for students without having to take the exams. We have been pushing open access to AP exams for students, students, giving them the chance and the shot to take those AP classes. And I do want to take a moment to thank the AP teachers in the district because what I did notice, and I know Dr. Ruffin saw this as well, is that when we went out due to COVID, it was many of our AP teachers who were first, who were back on already using Google Classroom with a lot of their classes, and they were right back on Monday when we went out on Friday, working with their students, knowing how hard they've worked up until that point in mid-March and that the AP exam would most likely be coming. At the time, we thought we were only going to be out for two weeks, and they weren't going to let those two weeks lie, and then everyone knows what happened as a result of that. So I want to thank the teachers, but I also want to thank the, you know, obviously, the students had to do the hard work and stick in there even during COVID to make this happen. And so I want to say kudos to the teachers, but also kudos to the students who stuck in there during a really tough time and rose to the occasion.
Okay, that's it, Darren?
That's it.
All right, any questions? Okay, wave your hand, please. Okay. I see Commissioner Brown, then Commissioner Tom Van Stone following. Commissioner Brown.
Okay, hi. Thanks for the report. I just had a question in terms of the AP courses. How are they going to fit in with the new career pathways? How does that work?
Well, the new career pathways could lend themselves to students taking AP courses. And so, for example, the board, you may recall that we passed Computer Science Principles maybe a year ago, and that we have to build students' ability up to get there so that they have the, so it's going to take some time to get students into some different courses. Historically, the district really hasn't changed from the core AP courses that you see in front of you. But I would anticipate, Liz, that there were going to be more offerings of AP courses once we get students into those pathways. Right now, we're offering, I would consider, some traditional AP courses because we've had only pretty much traditional pathways to them. I would anticipate with the career pathways, an opening of different CTE courses, such as Computer Science Principles, to have more AP test takers in the future.
If I may, just one question. In terms of, I know we talked quite a bit about how people get selected to go into the AP courses. Is it still self-selected or is it, does somebody have to be referred? I forget.
So our message consistently to the schools is that if a student wants to take an AP course, they let them into take the AP course. And so it's open enrollment. The district pays for the AP course. We use our title monies to make sure that no student Uh, we use our title money to, to, to make sure that no student has to pay to take the course. And so, um, every student that takes the course, the policy is also that you take the test. And so, um, um, so even if, even if it's a tough course and you struggle through it, and maybe you're not going to get that three on the course, we still want you to take the test, to get used to that, um, that type of environment. Um, it just builds that, that kind of stamina for college and career. And so, um, and, and, and so open enrollment, that's a continued message to the schools.
Great, because that, that's a big shift, right? At one point.
It, it, it shifted, it shifted, but you know, the thing is, is if, if, but that's also our message. If we, if, if we hear something different, uh, please reach out to us and, and we'd like to know, uh, please reach out to your school's principal. Um, if, if, uh, if a family's watching, or students watching, or, uh, and, and, and they, and they're not, and they're not, um, um, receiving that message at the school, uh, um, I would like them to reach out directly to the principal. And if, and, and if, if that doesn't get anywhere, reach back out to, to myself and, uh, be happy to, to, to talk to the student, to the principal.
Thank you very much. It's, it's moving in the right direction. Terrific. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Tom Van, Tom Vanstone.
Thank you, Vice President. Uh, Darren, that, that's pretty impressive, these numbers. And I'm, I'm glad you talked a little bit about, uh, who can take them, right? Because I know Dr. Ruffin is, is very big on making sure the door is open to anyone who wants to give it a try. Um, I, I really am impressed by these numbers, uh, because even if you get a one on an AP exam, you're still, you're still doing something right. But, um, yeah, I, I'm really glad that we're offering it to a lot of, a lot of students. Uh, having two nationals is amazing. I'm, I'm really very happy with this report. And I'm glad we're trying to get more and more kids into these classes. Uh, kudos to everyone at every high school. You know, Sora always has some better numbers than others. So, that's great, but I, I see the others starting to do the little catch-up. I think this is excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, uh, thank you, Commissioner. And I think, uh, two things, uh, Dr. Epperson put in a note to everyone that
Yes.
we also, an AP potential exam to help students, um, 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 who, who, who may not have thought they were able to take an AP class, get them involved in thinking like, yeah, you can do this. Um, so thank you for that, Dr. Epperson. And, and I'd say, uh, two things as well. Um, obviously, Dr. Epperson's presence uh, in the secondary schools, working with the administrators, um, the administrators, working with the counselors. It, it, it's a team effort, you know, to get numbers like this to move up. Um, and so I know Dr. Epperson works really hard with those, uh, secondary administrators to keep working at the numbers. And I would also say, uh, uh, um, Commissioner Vanstone, that the, um, um, that this is going to be bearing fruit, uh, the, though the curriculums that have been passed are, are, will only continue to bear fruit as we prepare students more and more to be able to take these AP exams. And so I, I think it's a multifaceted effort, uh, from Dr. Ruffin's vision to the work being done, uh, right in the school level. Um, and, and, and the goal is to, to, to see these kinds of increases. Um, this is, this was, this is, this was big. Um, I'm not sure we get this one every year, but it, we're moving in the right direction. Uh, one of the, one of the data points, I'm sorry, that I did want to, uh, just end with as well is that, uh, just to give you perspective, the pass rate in eighteen nineteen was twenty-seven point seven percent. The pass rate last year was forty-six point two.
That's good. That's good. Commissioner Vanstone, you set, y'all set?
All set. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Stango?
Thank you. Um, Darren, I'm also, um, impressed with the numbers here. And so I say to myself, what is the variable? What is the variable? And to me, the variable is that we were virtual. I'm wondering if because we're virtual, the teacher has more face time with the student, one-to-one. Uh, it may, you know, maybe much more intense. And also the fact that the, uh, test is virtual. Do you agree that that might have some bearing on this?
Oh, there's no doubt that if you, you, like, like I said, there's, there's, you know, it, it'd be, we're waiting for that national state data, uh, Commissioner Stango. Uh, we really want to compare our numbers to what happened in the state and nationally. And so, um, I, I can't say that for sure until we can compare it. Um, I can only look at the things that we had control over that have changed, some of the things that I mentioned prior to this in terms of curriculum, um, 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 and Dr. Epperson's work, and the administrators' work, and, and, and what the teachers are doing. Um, and, and so that, that will be very interesting, uh, to see when that national state data comes out. Uh, but I, I do think that, um, our online programming, um, although huge changes and shifts, teachers did a really good job of having standards-based curriculum, um, from March until June last year. They worked really hard with supervisors to make sure that they were giving students a proper education. Although it wasn't perfect, we could have used more face time for students. Uh, Commissioner, uh, actually, we have more face time this year than we did last year. Um, um, I think that you saw, as I mentioned before, a lot of these AP teachers were jumping right in on Monday, trying to work with their students to get them prepared. And so, um, um, I'll, 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 I'll be happy to send more information once we get that national state data to see, see the comparisons.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. All right, Darren, I think that's it. Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll move on to, uh, item number three, committee of the whole, uh, request approval of a memorandum of understanding MOU with the State, uh, Education Resource Center, uh, also known as CERC, for professional learning to support, promote, and develop racial equality in education. Uh, Ms. Davis, Jackie Davis, you're on.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, this Vice.
Evening.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, this Vice President to Commissioners and to Dr. Ruffin. We are looking for an MOU to approve our work with CERC. This will be our third year partnering with them. They have been providing assistance to our district equity leadership team. And so they have done a phenomenal job in sort of guiding us on this journey of investigating educational equity. This work has been at no cost to the district. It is funded by the Graustein Foundation. Um, and this year, the focus will be on creating a sustainability plan. We know that right now equity is sort of the hot topic. A lot of systems and businesses are talking about creating equity within their, their world. Um, however, we want this to be an embedded work. We don't want it to just be a moment, but we want it to be a part of how we operate. And so the focus this year will be on creating a sustainability plan that is aligned with our Equity Transformation Plan, which is aligned with our District Strategic Plan. And so we are looking to partner with CERC for another year to complete that effort.
Good. Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions? All right. I see someone waving here. Uh, Commissioner Tom Vanstone.
I, Vice President, Jackie, thanks for that. I, you know, I know this particular curriculum, of course, we, we all have a close eye on, trying to get something put together. Uh, in addition, actually, we already offer some, so just to enhance it and, and bring it more forward. Uh, and working with CERC, I think that actually was part of the ordinance that you were supposed to contract with, not contract, but MOU with them and deal with them uh, directly. So I appreciate this, uh, message, uh, to Darren is, um, we couldn't settle on a date for the last curriculum committee, uh, committee meeting. So if we could, uh, look to set that up and please bring, uh, to the committee, uh, whatever updates you could do, especially for this particip, particular subject. So, uh, Darren, let's get together and try to get that on the calendar. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Any additional questions? Okay, Commissioner Brown.
Yes, um, I'm very, very excited about this, uh, training, and I know we, it's part of this, uh, all the work everybody's been doing. I'm, I'm just curious, are the police, uh, our SROs, are they represented in the district equity team?
They are not. However, one of the things that we are looking at with this, um, sustainability plan is being able to look at all of the different pieces, um, all the different variables that affect outcomes for our students. And so, of course, one of those would be looking at some climate data. And so very much our work would inform some of the decisions that we make in terms of how we relate to students. And so although our SROs are not a part of our district equity leadership team, they are not beyond the scope of our work.
Okay, I, I think we should think about that because I think the more the SROs are considered really part of the school faculty and part of the school staff, and maybe, maybe they are part of other trainings related to anti-bias and cultural competency and, and, and all the trainings were implemented. I think it's important that we, uh, include all the staff, especially the role that the SROs are playing in our school. So I, I'd be interested to see how we can, uh, you know, really leverage that and, and, and have, have that positive role model be part, more, more integral to our work. So I think we should consider it. Or, or at least the leadership of the SROs, uh, who was participating in the Waterbury Voices the other night. I think it's, I think it's very important that they're, they're, they're hearing and, and buying into all of these structural changes that we're trying to move forward. So I hope we will, uh, think about that and, and make that part of the plan. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Any additional questions? Okay, uh, Commissioner Hernandez, I see you. Go ahead.
Hi, Jackie. Um, how receptive were, uh, everyone to this whole, um, idea? Did you get good feedback? Or, you know, are people willing to get involved? Just how receptive was it?
So somewhat all of the above. Um, we are so fortunate to have a team that have great minds and are, were very strategic in how we rolled out professional learning. So our first year of professional learning was focused in our middle schools. This coming year, we'll focus in high school, and the following year, we'll focus on elementary school. But each, um, grade level will go through a series. And so year one is just engaging in the conversation about race. And for most of us, for many of us, conversations about race are very difficult. It's an uncomfortable, um, topic at times. It's something that we may not know how to stay engaged with. And so the very first part of our interaction with staff is just how to have a conversation about race. You know, we don't talk about how to talk about it. And so we, we, um, partnered with CERC to identify a protocol that helps that process. Um, we have received some pushback, which is to be expected anywhere. Um, and actually, I, 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 I welcome it because that means people are grappling with some of these things, you know, that they're bringing their true self to the table. But a majority of our staff have been extremely supportive of it. We've gotten some positive feedback. Um, actually, on March sixth, right before school closure, we had a middle school equity conference. Um, and we did a survey, and the average survey rating was eight out of ten in terms of people's, um, sort of satisfaction with the content. And so we have received a lot of feedback from staff that are, are happy that we're able to talk about such a sensitive topic and something that is so important to Waterbury as a city.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hernandez. Any other questions? All right. No. Jackie, thank you very much. Uh, again, I can't get involved in the, I'm not supposed to get involved in the, uh, conversation because I'm running a meeting, but, um, I, I think we need to talk about the SROs and, and with, you know, that conversation has begun. Uh, so I hope we will continue to do that, but I'm pleased that CERC um, is definitely stick hanging in there with us, um, on this. So, uh, again, Jackie, thank you very much, and thank you for your work. Okay. All right. So we move on to, um, item number four. Uh, request approval of a memorandum of understanding with community mental health affiliates for cognitive behavior intervention for trauma in schools and bounce back. Uh, Ms. Gabrielson? You're on. Is she here? Okay, Darren, can someone please take this item, or we can move on?
I, I see, I see Kathy. She's in the grid, but she's frozen, so it may be just a glitch here. It might be, might, might want to move on and come back to it.
Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, I'll move on to the, uh, next one. Uh, she's got the next one, four, five, let's see. Four, five, and six. Okay, she's got a majority. Is, is Linda, uh, Redick Baron available?
I, I apologize.
Yes, I'm available by phone.
I, I lost the signal or the connection, Dr. Harvey.
All right. Thank you. Um, Linda, hold on. We'll get you.
My apologies. My computer's been going offline all day.
Understood. All right. So we're, uh, item number four, starting there, and then you have the next two or three.
Right. So the first item is a memorandum of understanding with community mental health affiliates for, to, to put into place two pilot programs uh, within the district. Uh, cognitive behavioral therapy and trauma in schools, as well as their, and/or their bounce-back program. And each is designed for a different age level of student. Uh, they are implementing these programs in, uh, New Britain Public Schools as well as, as in Waterbury, or hopefully to be in Waterbury Schools. The majority of the students that they see in their Waterbury offices come from our schools, so having them involved directly in the school program helps to relieve, uh, alleviate barriers for getting kids into service. Uh, so we would ask that this memorandum of understanding be recommended and, or be approved so that we can implement these programs.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions? All right. I don't see anyone waving. Okay, so can we go on to?
Commissioner Harvey, I have a question.
Okay, who is that?
Liz.
All right. Go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
Hi. Uh, thanks, Kathy. I think this is very exciting. I'm just wondering, will this impact, uh, the, uh, the students who are, who are kind of being arrested? We, we got that report from the Office of the Child Advocate, you know, students especially under the age of, of eight being, you know, I mean, because of their out-of-control behavior and so forth. Are these the kind of students that will be helped by these kind of programs?
The students that we're looking to help with this type of program are any student who has any type of trauma-related issue or social emotional need that requires more intensive therapeutic services. So this could very sincerely help students who might be on a track to become arrested or expelled or suspended from school. The idea is to increase the resources available to students so that they don't have to turn to, uh, negative behaviors, if you will, or undesired behaviors that could result in those types of outcomes.
Okay, that's really good because I think a lot of times that, you know, after reading the report, um, I think a lot of these students are, are in, they already have IEPs, a lot of them. And when they get out of control, this, this may be a, an additional support for them to really help them more self-regulate and so forth. Because I really sincerely hope that we really cut down on calling police for special ed students. So I, 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 maybe that's another conversation, but I think, uh, I would be interested in, in, in what we're doing, uh, in that front. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions? All right. I don't see anyone waving their hand, so let's move on to number five. Committee of the whole uh, Community School, Inc.
Right. So this is a, this is a request for you to approve a contract to provide transition services for students who have IEPs, who are in the eighteen to twenty-two cat, um, age range. Uh, we are required, as you know, to start transition planning for students as young as fourteen in some cases, and help guide them through the transition of high school and into post-high school life. We currently have, we have historically utilized children's community school as a placement for transition services. And we are looking to continue that with this contract.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? All right. No, I don't see anyone waving. Okay, let's move on to item number six, please.
This is also a contract request with, um, Bell Academy of Cosmetology for the similar services of transition activities for students in the eighteen to twenty-two age range.
All right. Thank you. Questions? Okay, wait a minute. I thought I saw someone waving. Okay. Wait a minute. I thought I saw someone waving. Okay. We're all set. Okay. Let's move on to item number seven.
Okay. Item number seven is a request to sign a contract with Waterbury Youth Services for their truancy prevention program. And I believe that we forwarded out some data on their truancy prevention outcomes from the last school year. I can review that if you like. Your pleasure is.
What, I think, does anyone want? To review that? I don't see anyone signaling. So we're good. We're good.
All right. So we would ask that we, that you recommend to approve this contract. We have a requirement to match services in the amount of cash and in-kind services, which we are doing. All but about $6,889 will be matched with financial dollar-for-dollar matching. The last $6,889 is going to be matched with in-kind services provided by Jackie Davis in the form of professional learning for staff at Waterbury Youth Services and also for the work that our attendance liaisons are doing when they're making referrals to Waterbury Youth Services. They did agree to implement those services as in-kind beginning this year. And we feel that based on a formula of about four hours per month, that we will meet that requirement.
Very good. All right. Any questions?
Karen.
Commissioner Brown.
Hi. Kathy, I just want, want you to know that I, I think, especially Commissioner Vanstone at several meetings in prior years, very happy with the Waterbury Youth Services report this time, very specific, what they did with the kids, what the referrals were. So it's so much better when we have this data and it seems to be a lot more accountability. So thank you very much. I think it's, it's much improved. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Any additional questions or comments? All right. I don't see anyone waving. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. So let's move on to item number eight, request approval for the 2020-2022 consolidated grant application. Linda Reddick Baron? You have the.
Good evening, Commissioners, Vice President Harvey and Dr. Ruffin. I'm presenting to you three ti, three title grants this evening, the consolidated federal grants, Title I, Title II-A and Title IV. As you can see, Title I, there's a little bit of an increase from last year and most of that is due to an increase in poverty overall. A hundred twenty thousand of that money, average of that is going to the private schools and most of our funds are being an increase of four network specialists, which are needed in this time with hybrid learning. And that money will, is sourced as sustainable. This grant will be around probably for a while. This funding will conclude benefits as well. Title II-A, there's a slight increase and that will go to the apartment, interim Department of Talent and Human Capital for professional development. And the Title IV grant, which includes some technology, will include some support for the network specialists and to support all of the changes in hybrid learning. Do you have any questions? Because this concludes my presentation in summary.
All right. Thank you, Linda. Any questions? All right. I don't see.
I have a, I have a question.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
Hi Linda, thanks for everything. I just, I was just curious as to how do we identify kids who are really falling way behind because of COVID? And are we targeting some of these tutorial extra services to these students? Or how are we responding to this, this, this whole situation where we know many kids didn't even connect and probably a lot of the circumstances that they're living with have gotten worse? So what's our targeting process?
Well, we operate a school-wide model. So all of our, we don't have a target approach, but all, so all of our students are available for all the Title I services. But the services that are directly related to the children who need it most are, is based on the data, like the M-class data, the math I-ready data, and those type of assessments will, will identify the students most in need.
That sounds great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you. Any additional questions? All right. Don't see anything. Okay. Linda, thank you very much. Okay. We'll move on to item number nine. Mr. Clark, request approval of a contract with Catapult Learning for tutorial services for Waterbury non-public schools.
Good evening, Vice President Harvey and good evening Commissioners and Dr. Ruffin. This is a recommendation for approval of a agreement for tutoring services with Catapult Learning. This is for the non-public schools and we engage in RFP process. We had representation of the non-public schools on that committee along with myself, Ms. Biolo and Ms. Reddick Baron to review these. We have done work in the past with Catapult and the non-publics also had done work with them before. They had a very strong application and we felt this would be a seamless use of services. And with the participation, particularly of the non-publics on the committee, this seemed to be the direction they were hoping to go in. So we certainly would join in their recommendation and ask for your approval.
Okay. They do? Questions? Okay, Commissioner Tom Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Well, I just want a little clarification on this one because this is not the second time we heard non-public schools mentioned. So who is under that umbrella? I mean, it's a service we do. I know we do it. But what schools are actually included in that?
Uh, to add Linda on, I think that it's essentially the, the local Catholic schools. Those non-publics, so meaning the parochial schools, and I believe the charters may also be covered by that. So in our group, we've got the Catholic schools, you've got the yeshiva. Who are under there? I think, I want to say it's about to either 10 schools in total. Doreen, you may, off the top of your head, know it better than I.
Yeah, we have, we have all the parochial schools, Children's Community, Holy Cross, Sacred Heart. We have yeshiva. I think Beis Yaakov, Children's Community, Alpha Omega. Not sure if I'm missing anybody.
That's, I was really looking to see if it was greater than the parochial system and it obviously is. But what do we cut, like 35% off the top and we bank that or charge them for it?
It's a straight pass-through, straight pass-through. Just kidding. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay. I don't see anyone waving. Okay. So Doreen, I think you're going to join us with the item number 10, request approval of transfers in the, hold on. Hold on, folks. Okay. Approval of transfers in the 2020-2021 fiscal year budget. Mr. Clark?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll start. And if I can maybe take these two together, it may be good because in some respects, the, the one after 11 is the justification or the reason why we'd need 10. But this is the request for a purchase agreement to be approved for the, the board, the property located at what's known as 116 Beecher and 119 South Made Road, the old St. Peter and St. Paul School. We have this opportunity here to purchase this property, which is essentially a school and the convent, as opposed to the church and the rectory, which main, remains in the control and ownership of the parish. We'd be picking up the school and the convent and the parking adjacent there too, about 3.2 acres of property with those buildings on it. As I discussed in committee last night, this represents an opportunity to get a facility that has recently been a school. I wouldn't say that's quite turnkey ready, but close. So we would do some upkeep, which is part of the fiscal request as well, engaging in some boiler replacements, some other fit-up and modernization of the school building particularly, and some to the convent as well. This is a location that could possibly serve many purposes. And there's a variety of elements where we could expand our current academic and program offerings in general, but also broaden and make more convenient perhaps some of the offerings we have. So I described it last night as both a depth and a breadth opportunity for our structure where it's located is central and where we have some overcrowding of schools and programs. So this can alleviate some of that if strategically done and spread out some of those programs while ideally also creating some more cost-effective efficiencies of where we put staff, where we may not have to bus people and so forth. So I think the location is very important, the size and the current condition of the building. We have this opportunity through the, the work of the city and the relationship with the archdiocese to get in and engage in some independent appraisals, some independent discussion. I think if this was to go out on the open market, it would be tougher for us to perhaps get or compete for this, this asset. And I think it's something that would grow with us for years to come and help us for our expansion and our goals and fulfilling the direction, the strategic plan that Dr. Ruffin has laid out, a real good resource, a real good piece of a infrastructure foundation to, to add to, to our, our current capital, our, our buildings. So the request would be for the purchase agreement. This agreement will be coming to you prior to the board meeting, being worked on with corp counsel. I have submitted a term sheet which identifies the land, the location and the price. The price we're asking for is a result of the negotiations using the three independent appraisals. The archdiocese had a company, we had a company through the city, the mayor's office, the finance office over there, assisting myself and Doreen, and attorney Linda Whitty, corporation counsel directly involved. And then a third independent appraisal, appraiser was chosen. The three appraisals of this particular location ended up being one a little bit higher than what we're recommending as a purchase price, one a little bit lower, and one essentially just right around the purchase price. So that's where the negotiations essentially led and ended up. So the, the purchase price is the 1.75 million. Again, that's for the, the building, the parking lots around it and the convent. And then we're also asking for $800,000, which would essentially go towards fit-up costs, which would include replacement of boilers, upgrading of some of the electrical for IT, security, phone, that, that sort of thing. We'll likely do a very similar kind of facelift, if you will, or, or modernization as we did at St. Joe's in the sense of drop ceilings, LED lights, some cover tile to cover some of the floors and recreate some of the classrooms, classroom spaces, reorganize those. So I think end of the day, that $800,000 that we're recommending is, is based on numbers that have been put together and projected by our inspector's office, Chris Harmon and his team, and Will Zuda and his team on the IT side, the security side. As you know, we've just done a big project with respect to the security phase three. We're going to be beginning phase four shortly. So we've got some really good pricing on those issues. I had put out a bid for some phone upgrades recently. So we had some good pricing and understanding of those issues, the work we've done at St. Joe's. And recently, it will be some very good understanding and pricing of those issues. So I'm very confident in the projections we've made. We put about a 3% contingency there to give us some wiggle room. As some of you have mentioned last night on committee, some older building, you may never know until you stick a hammer in the wall, what you might find. That is factored into our projections. And we've done a walk through the building. After last night's meeting, I followed up with the city representatives of the archdiocese and we will be arranging a tour for members of the board to participate in at your convenience prior to the vote. So you can walk through the building. I know some of the board members, Ms. Sweetie can walk through it in her mind's eye from her history at this school. But others who may not have been in there recently, I can certainly join myself. And I think what we'll do is have Chris and Will and others from their teams join so we can maybe answer some questions as we walk through what folks have questions or concerns. And remember, the city will be there too. The city being involved in this, I want to just be clear that, you know, city plan, the building inspector, the fire marshal and so forth have all been engaged and reviewed information with respect to the location, the sale and the protected use. So we feel like we're in really good shape with all those things. And we feel very excited about the opportunity based on the location and the size and the many potential things that this could help us with in the future as we continue to move forward here in Waterbury. So Doreen, I'll, I'll let explain the, the actual movement of the money, where it's going from and where it's going to, and then be available for questions.
Thank you, Will. Good evening, Vice President Harvey and Commissioners and Dr. Ruffin. As Will explained, I'm going to go through just the funding piece for the acquisition and purchase and for the building improvement line. As Will had said, the acquisition and purchase price for the 61 and 67 South Made Road and 116 Beecher Avenue is $1,750,000. We are taking that from our capital improvement fund, which is Board of Ed Unallocated Sinking Fund. And we will be putting that into an account, a special capital project for the acquisition and purchase of that building and property. We also will be moving funds of $800,000 from the Capital Improvement Fund, Board of Ed Sinking Fund, to the Special Capital Project Fund for the building improvement of that property in the amount of $800,000. That totals $2,550,000 for the purchase, acquisition and the improvements to that property. Any questions?
Commissioner Tom Vanstone, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I, I just really want to send a, a thank you out to Mr. Clark. We talked through a lot of my concerns last night. I had a better understanding once I saw how the lay of the land is, what piece of that property we exactly were talking about. Got a nice picture of that outline in email today. So I'm, I'm actually feeling much, much better about this. I'm looking forward now to going forward with it. You know, we asked questions and here it is 24 hours later and I have all my answers. So thank you, Mr. Clark. I'll sit, Madam Vice President.
Very good. Any questions? Any additional questions? Okay. I don't see anyone waving. So. All right. We will move on. Thank you, Will and Doreen. We will move on to item number 12. Dr. Ruffin?
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey and members of the board. Prior to going into a completed superintendent's update, I'd like to speak to items 10 and 11 just a little to assure the board that it is our intention to be able to utilize the property in such a way that it will enhance our district and move forward with our strategic plan. Through the various forums that we've had over the last few years, I think we've heard interest in, in, and, and concern over some of the growing programs and some of the growing capacity of some of our schools. And I think that you could expect that our new facility, if it is approved, is going to be utilized to allow us an opportunity to not be so overcrowded, especially in some of our most crowded schools and our programs. Additionally, there has been conversation through some of the forums of an interest in expanding some of the academic programs. So I look forward to speaking with you in the very, very near future about the, the beginnings of a, an international or dual language program that we could have as part of, of, of a, a new facility that will allow our students to begin at a very early age to master two languages, learn in two languages. in two languages, as well as being able to acquire credentials and advanced credits before they are graduating from high school and credentialing in more than one language. So I look forward to continuing that conversation and seeing how we could enhance a different facility as we relieve some of the enrollment in some of the schools and enhance academic opportunities in the form of dual language program within the school as well. So I look forward to talking with you about that more. I think we've heard that a number of times in various community forums, and I think Waterbury is certainly poised to be able to offer dual languages. We have multiple languages in our city and an opportunity to be able to move our students forward in a strategic way to allow them to be able to benefit from that great opportunity. In terms of an update tonight, I just want to share with everyone that while we are in day 17 of the school year, you know, we've had a good school beginning, and we've had relatively few reports of positive COVID-19 for our in-person students. We have had a number of our virtual students that have contracted COVID-19, but we are very vigilant. And I would like to remind everyone, I'd like to remind our entire staff and our families that while the governor has also and will be lifting some of the strict restrictions in terms of capacity for social gatherings and at restaurants and at functions, I want to remind everyone that we are still in a pandemic and that we should continue to be vigilant in wearing masks and making certain that we are socially distancing, even though we might be feeling a little bit more comfortable. It is not over. So I think that if people continue to be vigilant and they are wearing their mask, even when they're at home and mingling with family and friends, especially in a social setting, I think they need to be very vigilant there because once people return to school, I think the effects of whatever happens outside of school can affect our schools. So be very vigilant. Don't drop your guard to think that it's not going to affect people because most of our cases are not even directly related to school. So be very, don't drop your guard so that it affects you and your families at home and it affects us within our school systems. So I just want to remind everyone of that. You know, as we begin to see some of the restrictions lifted, we are still operating in Waterbury Public Schools, being very cautious and very deliberate about how we continue to provide safety and healthy learning environments for our students as staff and our teachers. Also, we are following the protocols that have been carefully articulated. They're posted online. We've had quite a few practices of when someone does report a situation. We are not operating in a silo in Waterbury. We have lots of people from various lenses looking at the process and doing contact tracing. The contact tracing is not done in isolation. It's done with the health department, and it's very clearly articulated what that process is, whether people agree with it or not. We are following the process based on what we have been told by the health department as well as the contact tracing, and we are reporting and tracing based on the information that is shared with the people that have been in closest contact with an individual. I know that in the process, especially a couple of incidences that we've had this year, other people thought that, you know, they knew better what the process should be, but I want to assure everyone, we are following the process, and we've had unfortunately many different scenarios whereby we were able to put together the information that was very pertinent and information that went out to the school in a timely fashion. Timely does not mean when someone sees it on social media. Timely means when we receive notification from the health department that someone tests positive, and then it becomes a fact instead of a rumor. It's not a matter of just someone saying, "I don't feel well," and we send a memo out. It's a matter of someone testing positive, and then we're proceeding. If someone is ill, we encourage people to stay home. We are not treating this as adversarial. If a child is ill, please keep the child home. There's no consequence to that, other than you're going to keep the child safe. And the child does not have to have COVID to stay home. If you do not feel well, you should stay home. Notify the proper person that you're going to be at home because you're not feeling well and get the proper care and attention that you need prior to returning to school. We do not want our staff or our students to come to school if they're not feeling well. And then correct notifications are critically important. We've had a few incidences where people are not following the protocol, and instead of contacting the first point of contact, which would be the principal at the school level, sometimes they're contacting other people, which may not be able to provide them with the correct information and certainly not in a timely fashion. I know my staff has worked tirelessly over the weekends as soon as we receive information about a case, and then the staff is working vigilantly and working along with the Department of Health and the contact tracing and the principal of the school or the supervisor of the person with COVID-19. And so it is not a simple process. It's not something that takes 30 minutes. It takes multiple hours. And then the communication that goes out is the accurate communication based on the facts that we've received at the time. And that is how messages get sent to the school principal. That's how they get posted. That's how they get sent out on parent square, and we are still conducting iris alerts because not everyone is situated with appropriate credentials on parent square. But that is our mode of communication. When there's something that's more individualized, that doesn't go out in a parent square, the principal or the person that is the supervisor is taking a personal responsibility of contacting the people that are involved so that we can keep people safe and we can keep them informed with the appropriate information. That's the protocol. We've followed it a number of times, and we will consistently follow it. When rules, guidance and directions and changes occur, we will communicate that effectively. But until such time, the protocol that we are following is the protocol that we are following for the safety and the health of everyone concerned. In October, we're going to have, I'm sorry, Commissioner, was our question?
No, go ahead, Doctor. I thought you were...
In the month of October, there will be at least two, maybe even three deviations from the current school schedule that we have been following to allow for our students to take the PSAT and the SAT. Both PSAT and SAT must be administered in person. We have received a notification from our virtual students that they are interested in taking the PSAT and the SAT. We're very pleased to be able to accommodate them. What will happen during the month of October and during the administration of both the PSAT and the SAT, there may be variations in the asynchronous learning that our students will be receiving. That has gone out in the form of a communication. It is going out to campus principals. It will go out to parents and to students as well. The students that are in school will take their exam in person while in school without any changes to their schedule at that time. However, when the virtual students are going to be coming in schools, the in-person students will not be there. That is going to assure us the ability to clean the campuses. We're going to keep the students in cohorts, so if they are in person, they will not be in person at the time that the virtual student comes in person to take their PSAT or their SAT exams. That is written in a document that has been communicated to our principals and it will be to our teachers as well as our families and our students with advance notice to plan accordingly. This does not mean that instruction will stop, but instruction will not be done at that time during the testing administration in the same format that we're doing it now. It will be done with students working online with their learning that the teachers will have prepared for them in advance. So learning will continue. It'll still be a day present in school, but it will allow for safe return of students in person to take a test that can only be administered in person. Also, I did hear a couple of comments from some of the commissioners about the social and emotional mental health. It is our goal to be able to provide comprehensive resources, so it is not so fragmented when students require the social and emotional resources to assist them in school. While we have a few entities that we have worked with, it is still not a cohesive plan with people in-house to provide the wraparound services. It is our goal to be able to create such a structure so that schools are not fumbling to be able to get the resources that they need to assist students and our families in a time of crisis or in the time of need. I feel that we are headed in the right direction, but we're not quite there yet. I'm very encouraged by conversations that we've recently had with family and children's aid here in Waterbury, and we are moving forward to pilot at least in two schools to start with, a program that will allow for our students to be able to receive the social and emotional mental health care that they would need. And I will share with you more information as we move forward. Having said that, it is going to continue to grow until we can provide those resources where it affects our children the best way, and that would be an in-school service model and a wraparound services. And then finally, for my update tonight, is to give the board an update on Waterbury Voices. We held our first meeting on Tuesday. Waterbury Voices is a roundtable that is very inclusive and diverse in hearing the voices of our community members, inclusive of school staff, the chief Spagnolo and some members of his staff. It is hosted by both Chief Spagnolo and myself, and it involves not only Waterbury Public Schools' parents and administrators, but it also involves our students and involves many, many community members from the faith-based community as well as Hispanic Coalition, as well as the NAACP, the NAACP Youth Council, and other members of our community parks and recreation and others who are very critically involved and take ownership of what happens to have better outcomes for our youth in Waterbury. This first meeting was an introduction. We worked on a charter. We worked on some, what we would like to see, to know that our voices are going to count and matter, and we expect to have our second meeting in October, which will be published at a later date. We would expect to meet approximately once a month, and the meeting, the roundtable, is not simply a meeting to be able to share voices, but rather to be able to advise and inform so that the Board of Education, along with the Police Department, along with others, are going to have right information and hear from the voices of the people that make up the city so that we can provide the very best resources to meet the needs of our students and for better youth outcome in Waterbury. There were approximately 30 people in attendance at the roundtable, and I was so pleased that everyone's voice was heard. I was pleased that everyone is committed to returning to this roundtable, and I look forward to what the outcomes will be in the future that will benefit our youth. So we should be able to measure our success. We should be able to measure our gains, and we should be able to talk openly about our problems and critically talk to each other about ways that we believe we could resolve them so that our youth could benefit. I thank you, Commissioner Harvey and Commissioner Brown for being in attendance, and thank you to my senior cabinet for being in attendance as well. And that concludes my report for this evening, Commissioner.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Are there any questions? Okay, I don't see anyone waving. Any questions? Going once, twice? All right, Dr. Ruffin, thank you very much. We will move on to item number 13, superintendent's notification to the board. A, you have your athletic appointments, and in B, you have your resignations. Any questions or discussion on that, on those two items? All right, I don't see anyone waving their hand, so I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to convene an executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance, evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second. Thank you. Who's second, please?
Juanita.
All right, Juanita, you get this one. All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, we are in executive session.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey, I just need to ask Dr. Ruffin if she needs anyone other than the commissioner.
Vice President Harvey, um, I, I just need to ask Dr. Ruffin if she needs anyone other than the commissioner.
For all. Thank you very much. Thank you for the flag. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Orso?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Here.
Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Present.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Present.
President Pagano. Okay.
Thank you. All right, um, item of 4.0, Commissioner Sweeney.
Commissioner Stango.
Excuse me, Commissioner Stango.
Okay, thank you. Item 4.0 regarding the Crosby High School principal appointment. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends the appointment of the principal of Crosby High School effective, uh, in October 8th, respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
Just so I can clear, to make sure it wasn't just my audio broke up, there was a word postponed in there?
No, I have to make the motion.
We're in the discussion.
So make the motion now.
Make, yeah.
I need to be recognized for discussion.
It's been recognized for discussion. We're in discussion right now. Go ahead.
Okay, so a motion to postpone item 4.1 to the regular meeting of 10:15.
Can I get a second? All right, any discussion on that? All right, if not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All right, any opposition? The motion passes. Okay, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Can I get a second?
I think Mr. Stango has a question.
Point of personal privilege, privilege, Mr., point of personal, point of personal-
Point of personal privilege is what you're trying to say, yes.
Okay, I just don't think we could, uh, I know this is, the meeting is, is completed with that. I don't think we can leave without giving Jason a proper send-off. I think, is it appropriate to do it as part of this meeting?
Uh, it would be a foul, you know, a foul meeting. And no, it's not appropriate, uh, for, for us to do that at this meeting, but we will do that.
How about when, after we adjourn, adjourn, we stay another minute?
It's not his last meeting.
We're in special, we gotta adjourn. Right, okay, any further discussion?
Charles, we can do it at the next meeting, he's gonna be with us.
He's not gonna be the next one, is he?
Yes, he is, 15.
I thought we were rid of him tonight.
Any further discussion?
You wish.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye to adjourn. Any opposition? Good evening, folks, thank you.
Good evening. Thanks, everyone.
Bye now.
Thank you.
Get the band ready for Jason.
We got one more week to work on that speech, Charlie.
I don't have a speech. I'm looking for, I'm looking for a virtual glass. I'm looking for, I'm looking for a virtual class.